Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, February 27, 2018. First item of business is the approval of minutes from February 20.
I move to approve the minutes of February 20, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. Okay, since it is one minute after seven and we have a posted hearing on, with National Grid at 7:05, I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing on the layout of Lewis Court. This is actually related to Article R. This is something that the board has taken up in the past. Is there anyone in the public who's here to comment on the street, on the street layout for Lewis Court? Okay, with no one here on that, we do have Article R for consideration by the board. Do either of my colleagues have any questions on Article R? Don't we, we've heard this, right?
I've reviewed the material, I'm satisfied.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we act favorably on notice of intention to lay out as a townway away commencing at Westerly Terminus of the existing public way named Lewis Court and extending westerly therefrom as shown on the plan entitled "Layout Plan Lewis Court, Hingham, Mass.," dated February 13, 2018, prepared by James Engineering, Inc. Having been left at the abode of the owners thereof and posted in a public place not less than seven days prior to the date of this public meeting, in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 82, Section 22, the Board of Selectmen hereby adopt the layout of Lewis Court as shown on said plan and is more particularly described in the meets and bounds description thereof submitted with said plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I moved favorable action on Article R, street acceptance, Lewis Court.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, could you please let the advisory committee know that we have taken action on Article R, they're taking it up. Harry, I think we have maybe two more minutes, I don't want to conduct that hearing early, so let's, let's move to the foster school statement of interest. And Ray Estes, who's the vice chair of the Foster School Building Committee's here, thank you for coming back, Ray. I think the last time that this was on our agenda, there were some open questions.
I had a chance to speak with Ray and reviewed the material he sent me and I have a clear understanding of the questions that I had in my mind, so I'm good to go.
Karen, did you have any?
I'm all set to go.
Okay. Ray, anything to add?
Nice to see you, Ray.
No, this will be the quickest meeting I've ever attended in this building.
Stick around, we got more to go.
Just for the record, Ray Estes, 924 Hill Street, Vice Chair of the 2017 School Building Committee.
Okay, well, the motion actually is a little bit long, so will, is there anyone, is there anyone here in the public, in the, in the audience who wishes to ask a question or make a comment? This is essentially an article that to, that as a town, we are submitting a statement of interest for foster school, and so the selectman approval is required on that, that's obviously something that's important for all of us, so there is some specific.
And the, and the statement of interest is for the, in order to participate in potential state funding through the MSBA.
Right.
So it's something we've done before, and we need to resubmit the statement of interest for foster school.
Do you want to read the motion?
Yes, since Paul had to do the really long one the last time. All right, ready.
Win the prize tonight.
I move that we authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form honored before April 6th, 2018, for the Foster Elementary School located at 55 Downer Avenue, Hingham, Mass., MAP ID 38/0/01, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The building was built in 1951 and does not meet current code and significantly lacks environmental quality for natural lighting, artificial lighting, fresh air ventilation, and evenly distributed heat and cooling temperatures to enhance the educational environment. Classroom configuration does not allow for the uninterrupted instruction, several classrooms have no natural light, the building envelope and the window systems are inefficient, and the steam heating distribution system, I thought you were going to get me to pronounce that, distribution system and electrical systems are failing due to deterioration and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or convince the town of Hingham to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Ray.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay, next on the agenda, Harry, we'll do the public hearing on the request of National Grid with Bayberry, are you, are you solo on this, or is?
I guess so, I guess I forget what, might intend to, please.
Okay.
I can address the Board of Selectmen, any questions they may have?
Okay. So, Harry, this is a, this is a request to replace a gas main that will affect Bradley Woods Drive and a portion of Bayberry Road?
Yeah, and Sycamore as well.
And Sycamore?
Yep.
Okay. And I noticed in the package that the, all of the abutters have been notified, which is our standard process. Do you know when, when this work is targeted for completion?
I don't, I'm not sure what their schedule is right now, I'll be meeting with National Grid tomorrow, and I give, one of the questions I'll be asking when potentially mobilize. It would be our best interest, as far as engineering office, is to get them into Stanford Drive first, they've replaced them over there, which has not yet been heard before the board, I think they'll be next week, Zep Road is on reconstruct schedule as these aren't, so we're going to try to arrange a schedule for, you know, for the benefit of us.
Okay. Paul or Karen, any questions on this application?
Yeah, I actually do, and I apologize because I should have reached out to you before tonight, but I'm just wondering going forward, I made a few changes to the grant of location letter for the big project, and I'm sort of thinking they carry through.
Yeah, we're going to incorporate those, can we discuss that, and we will, these requests were already typed up and ready to go and sent to the board before, you know, while those comments were made.
Okay.
So that we didn't want to change them, being they're our distributor.
Okay, and so if I, if we approve this tonight, could I, could I say that we're approving it pursuant to this January 22 letter, as will be revised, or something along those lines?
Well, most of the comments you made, the changes, I mean, those are issues that I addressed verbally with the contractor.
Directly with them.
So that, you know, those things are carried out automatically, and it's always good to have them writing, I'm glad you brought that up, and we will.
Okay. And so the, you know, Mary brought up that the abutters have been notified of this grant of location hearing, but the other thing, and I guess, you know, that was part of what we built into the, to the Main Street project letter, the 228 letter, was notification to abutters, you know, in some period of time prior to work commencement, commencing, so would that be something that you would go over verbally and then?
Yes, and that's common practice when all the gas main replacement jobs, the water main replacement jobs, any work of that nature, all affected neighbors about the project get notified.
Okay, and so maybe I'll follow up with you again offline, just to maybe augment our standard letter, just to, like you said, I think you do this all the time, so it's routine to you, when I read it and I'm, I'm saying, okay, I'm going to vote on this based on these conditions, just who I am, I like to see it written down.
I'd be really pleased you read it.
Well, I got that going for me. I just, my last point, and this sort of goes to the notice to the neighbors when this takes place, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a pretty tight neighborhood in there, there are a lot of little kids that play on those streets, so, you know, I just think it behooves us to make sure that everybody understands when the project's going to start and, you know, anticipated timing of work, and so, thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public on this? Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 420 feet of two-inch gas main in Bayberry Road. This gas main will originate from the existing two-inch main on Bradley Woods Drive and continue under the paved surface of Bayberry Road for the entire length to completion at House Number 19. This gas main will replace an existing two-inch beer, steel, decayed main that is approximately 77 years old. In addition, as part of this project, the request includes to install and maintain approximately 265 feet of two-inch gas main in Sycamore Lane. This gas main will originate from the new main in Bayberry Road and continue under the paved surface of Sycamore Lane for the entire length to completion at House Number 6. This gas main will replace an existing two-inch beer, bear, steel, decayed main that is approximately 77 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated January 22, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
On behalf of National Grid, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Harry.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, so the next, the next two items on the agenda are somewhat related, and a forecast update and a vote on budgets, and just procedurally so that Tom is actually going to just give a quick update to the board on the forecast, that was the latest version of the forecast, which will be the starting point for this discussion. I'm going to walk the board through a presentation that Tom and I have worked on, we'll have some discussion with the board, we will open it up at a certain point for questions and comments from the public, so that'll, that'll kind of be the process. So the beginning of this is going to be a little bit of discussion, we've had presentations on the school budget, we've had the opportunity to ask questions, we've, this is really our first time as a board to talk about the entire budget as well, so there will be time for public comment. So, Tom, why don't, why don't you start out with the forecast update? Karen and Paul, you have a copy of this in your folder, you also have the forecast, the five-year forecast document that, in there as well.
Okay, so if you remember the last time, the last time that we took up a forecast update was on, was at your meeting on the 13th, where we had highlighted a few, a few changes, so this will be along those lines, the same type of an update. So without getting, without reading through the entirety of the, of the documents again, I'll highlight the changes. We have the deficit, the total deficit as per the forecast as of today, is down to $1.2 million deficit in the forecast. The revenue projections, there's only been two changes in revenue projections, and these are almost definitely going to be the last revenue changes you're going to see. We've increased our motor vehicle, our anticipated motor vehicle excise tax revenues by $50,000, and we've increased our investment income projections by $25,000. That brings the total FY19 anticipated local receipts up to a 95.5% of the, of our last known actuals, which are the 2017 actuals. As you know, 2018 is still in the, is still in the projected category. Okay, on the expense side of the ledger, the, we've had two changes, one fairly sizable, and that is the group insurance number. Group insurance number has come down by approximately $1.3 million, and that's in reaction to the news we received last Thursday, I believe it was, from the GIC, that their projected increases for their, for their, for their healthcare plan are, will equate to a total as it reflects to the town of Hingham, will equate to approximately a 2% increase. We budget every year for our group insurance increase to equate, to equal 10%, increase. Sometimes we're high, sometimes we're low, but that's the projected, the projected increase each year for our budget purposes. This year came in at 2%, that's the savings for the way our employees use their healthcare plans, that's savings of approximately $1.3 million over projections. The other number, the other number that's changed in the expense, on the expense side is that capital outlay has come in slightly over their, their projected, or their budgeted number of 2.3 million by, by about $90,000, $91,000. Okay, our next steps, this is kind of a recap again of our prior slide, we had again last Thursday with the GIC announced their new group insurance rates, on this past Monday we had a forecast update for the forecast team that highlighted the changes that I just shared with you. On Monday night, the school committee voted that their education recommendation, education budget recommendation of $52,622,818 for an increase of $2,860,121, or a 5.75% increase over their FY18 budget. The February, excuse me, today, at this meeting, we anticipate the Board of Selectmen will vote all of your budgets, all that's the school budget, the town budgets, as well as the capital outlay budgets. Next week, advisory will take up all of their budget recommendations, and of course, at the end of April, in the 23rd, town meeting, we'll consider and vote on the advisory committee's recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions on that before we?
No.
Karen?
No, I'm just, yeah.
Doing some math?
Yep.
Yep. So, you know, as, as we're looking at the budget, as we've said all along, this is all the information that we have, the advisory committee, the school committee, we've all gotten the same information, and, you know, this is sort of where we are, and before I start kind of walking through, I just, you know, and Karen, you know, you probably remember this from your days on advisory, in a couple of my years on advisory, I sort of had the feeling that sometimes there were decisions made about the forecast, you know, you'd spend hundreds of hours, you know, the school committee would have budget hearings, selectmen would have budget hearings, advisor would have budget hearings, you had liaisons that were meeting with department heads, and, and sometimes as it came down to the end, it, it sort of felt like the process happened around you. And I remember my first couple of years on advisory, I sort of thought, well, what, what's the point of me chasing down all this information if that's going to happen? And I remember when John Asher was the chair of the advisory committee, he, as he does in so many different ways, he sort of looked and said, you know, there's some ways we can do this to make sure that the transparency and the independence of, of this process is strengthened. And I remember that year when we voted on the budgets in advisory, we, we walked in and there was a deficit, and we, we all voted, and, and all the different committees and boards voted. And I think that's been a good practice, while it creates some uncertainty for all of us, I think it, it strengthens the process and it allows the public to see what's going on. This budget is not done in a back room or somewhere else, it's done right in view of the public, and while my hope tonight is that we will vote on a balanced budget tonight, I think we also need to acknowledge that the ultimate decision lies with the advisory committee. Our recommendations inform the advisory committee, as the school committee's vote informs the advisory committee. And so I, Tom, if you want to maybe flip the slide, with that in mind, so this number here that you see as a deficit, this does not reflect, the, the school number that, that was voted last night is, is about $50,000 and change lower, and, you know, that is, I'm sure you can appreciate, there are a lot of numbers in here, and I realized that it would be better to stay true to the forecast, but I actually think that the, the analysis and the framework you're going to see, I, I actually think that it all, we end up in the same place. But with no more real revenue news expected, what, what Tom and I have tried to do is give one path to balance the budget. It's a starting point for the three of us to work, it's a framework for our discussion, and, and I think importantly to note that it reflects some of the municipal priorities that, that Tom has given us, and again, I think an important thing we need to do with the advisory committee is to say, of all the different municipal requests, these are the ones that are most significant to, to this board. You know, the school department, the school committee has the statutory authority to spend budget dollars as they see fit, and that's, that's, every school committee has that authority in Massachusetts, so on the municipal side, when, you know, if there's a budget set for the police department, we don't have the ability to say, well, we want to move it to the fire department. So this is a path that's based on allocating the dollars that we have, and it's also based on our town financial policy. So this is just a starting point as orientation, and I'm not, I'm not going to go through this in detail, but what you see, you see the town budget, and one of the things I like to try to do when we look at the town budget is make sure we include the, the personnel allowances that are part of Article 4 and 5. I think we need to do that so that as we're looking at year-over-year growth rates, there is consistency between, with all the budgets. So if you look at the, the sort of town budget, and that's police, fire, public works, library, recreation, board of health, in the forecast right now, the, the request for 19 is an $881,000 increase, or basically 3.3%, that's where we're starting. The education budget, you heard a slightly different number, instead of it being 5.9% is about 5.75% or about $2.8 million. Capital outlay, we got the recommendation last week, capital outlay is looking for just under $2.4 million, which is a 7.4% increase. And I have workers' comp listed, that's the only benefit item I listed because there's an additional request that's part of that line item, so I thought it was helpful to capture. Workers' comp this year is budgeted at $330,000, based on some claim incidents, Tom was recommending $380,000, that's a $50,000 increase, or 15.2%. What you see on this page, and this might be helpful for us as we go through our work, again, I'm not going to go through this in detail, but these were all of the additional budget requests that were part of the municipal budget. When all of our departments put forth budget recommendations, there were requests for items totaling $586,000. Tom, in his capacity as interim town administrator, recommended some of them. Every one of them is worthy, absolutely every one of these requests is worthy, but one of the guidelines that we gave Tom was to say, look at these recommendations not only on their merits, but also take into account the town financial picture, and take a look at the revenue, and understand that it's probably not likely that we will be able to achieve a budget increase that's substantially greater than what's been happening in recent history. And so Tom recommended about $247,000 in additional requests, again, it's about 42% of the total. And I just wanted to dimensionalize that a little bit for the public, because we don't just look at the dollars, but we look at what's behind it. And I, I've pulled a few statistics that come out of the, the CAFRA report that I think just illustrate that across the town, whether we're talking police, fire, town hall, the library, education, our service levels collectively are increasing, and, and we're all feeling it in different degrees. If you look at the police calls, in the last five years, they've gone up by 29%. A lot of that has to do with the buildout of the shipyard. Our fire calls in the last five years have gone up by 13%. We think about the meals tax revenue, which is wonderful for Hingham, but the number of health permits has increased in five years by 76%, and a lot of that has to do with the restaurants. Here in town hall, we have a number of administrative functions that go on that are very important. We've had a 24% increase in five years in the number of retirees, and the administration of those benefits is very important work. Down below that, what you'll see is, you know, within the town budget, in the last three years, the budget's grown by about 2% each year, or about half a million dollars. Over five years, it's grown by an average of 6% a year, which is 1.2 million. I will just point out that one of the reasons for that big difference is that snow and ice is in that, is, is in that budget. And, you know, one year you'll have $2 million of snow and ice, and the, and the next year you'll have $400,000. So again, we see the starting point of 3.3%, and then just down at the bottom, you'll, I think head count is important because, again, as a town, about 80% of our total operating budget is personnel-driven. In the last three years, we've added five people on sort of the, within different town departments, over the last five years, a total of 18 people, and the additional requests that Tom is proposing would, would propose an additional 1.5 full-time equivalents, or Just a quick, you know, snapshot, we also try to look at this for the education budget, and, you know, while we look at calls for police and, and health permits, one, one of many different parameters is enrollment. If you look at education enrollment, over the last three years, it's been largely flat, up about 2% over five years, next year, expected to go down by about 51 students, or 1.2%. I think we also did see that in the presentation, we saw that enrollment isn't necessarily the full story, that I think like, like we see in the police department, like we see in the fire department, like we see with veteran services, the complexity of the work that we do for the citizens of the town of Hingham has just gotten a lot more complex. We have more domestic, domestic calls in the police department. With the fire department, it's a lot of calls to help somebody who's elderly, who's perhaps fallen or living alone. I think we understand that, that in today's world, the social emotional needs of, of our students is really becoming acute, so again, we're all, we're all feeling it in different ways. And again, what I just also point out, if you look in the middle of that slide, you'll see the average increase in the school budget in the last three years and five years, which has been roughly about $2 million a year, or 4.6%. Again, we look on the town side and say, the town budget goes up by 2%, 3% a year, there are a lot of different dynamics in the education budget, so I don't, I don't think it's reasonable to say, well, gee, the, the education budget should grow by 2%. There are a lot of different dynamics at play, a lot of mandates, but again, that's, that's kind of what's been happening historically. Then down at the bottom, you'll see some information on head count, you know, a couple years ago, Dr. Gell gave me some information, I've been kind of updating it every year, and again, I think you can see that a, a big portion of the increase in the school budget request is personnel-driven. So how do we balance this budget? All right, so here, here you go. And again, I'm, I'm working off the forecast that we have, I realize that the deficit with the education number is slightly different, but I didn't want to get too confusing. So, so the approach I took was, let's, let's start by taking out all the additional requests across the board. So for the town, it's $197,000. For, for education, from the presentation we saw on February 6th, it's about 1.3 million. It's $50,000 for workers' comp, and I took out $91,000 for capital outlay because, because that to me seemed to be treated as an additional request. So here's what happens, if you take out all those additional requests, we reduce our bottom line by $1.6 million, and we have a surplus of $400,000. Okay, so that's, that's kind of step one. Now, we're going to, I'm going to talk about adding those back, but my thought is, start here and try to just kind of get this on as level of a playing field as possible. Okay? Now, there's been a lot of talk about one-time money, and I think we want to be really careful about one-time money because it's one-time money. We want to be careful not to apply one-time money to expenses that recur every year. The way I think about it is, there's some years when in my household, we get a tax, a tax, a tax refund, there's some years we don't. We don't budget it into our household budget because we can't count on it every year. As I looked at the forecast, I saw one opportunity to apply some one-time money, and, and I would, I would, Paul and Karen, ask you to consider it. If you look on the left-hand side of the screen, that's our new growth forecast, and remember, new growth is, is when the revenue pie grows because of new development. And if you notice in FY, between FY19 and And if you notice, in FY, between FY 19 and 20, in FY 19, we're at 675. You may remember that a couple forecasts ago, we actually took that number down. It was a million dollars, but the timing of some of the building permits that we had was a little bit delayed. So I look at it and say, okay, this year, we got some money for some building permits for a couple of developments at the shipyard. And in FY 20, we expect that that is going to turn into permanent revenue, and it's going to be there for, it's going to be there. And so to me, I would, I would feel comfortable saying, okay, that's one-time money. Tom pointed out yesterday that if you look at FY 22, the new growth drops down to $550,000. But that money gets put into our revenue base, and, you know, I, I think, as I look at new growth, I would propose for, for your consideration that we apply $275,000 in one-time money, which means that we now have $693,000 to distribute back to the budgets. You with me?
I certainly am.
Okay. So here's the proposed allocation, and again, I view this as a starting point. We have many, many worthy municipal requests. I am proposing that we add back two of them. $74,610 for an additional firefighter and their firefighter's uniform, which basically gets all of our shifts to 13. And when, when Chief Olson and Deputy Murphy were in, they talked about the fact that when a shift is at 12, we are more prone to overtime. And so i- in many ways, hiring this person will help manage the overtime, when we have to pay overtime, time and a half.
Yeah, it was, it was a projected, actual deficit annually for hiring this position of about $8,000.
Right. So this would, this would help. And then, the other thing I would recommend we add back is that our animal control officer, Leslie Badger, we have an opportunity to certify her to learn how to use a defibrillator and to administer Narcan, so that she would have that, that, those credentials, very similar to every other member of the Hingham police force.
Can I just ask, and I don't mean to stop you, because you're on a roll, but the 74,610, it, it looks a little bit discounted from, from the number I have?
I think the number, so the number that you had with the 94,000?
Yeah.
That also included 30, a request of $31,000 for additional overtime for the fire alarm boxes?
Oh, right, right, right.
And, and in, in this recommendation, I'm not putting that back in.
Okay, all right.
So that's item number one. Item number two is workers' compensation. We have two claims that are open. We think that we're going to be $25,000 over budget this year. I just sort of look and say, I think good budgeting, if we know we have an expense, I might propose putting $25,000 in there. You'll see that I'm proposing that the vast majority of the surplus go back into the education budget. $566,000, and the, the step four is, is $27,000 back to capital outlay, and here's why. When, you know, many years ago, and Karen, you'll, you'll remember on advisory, we were significantly underfunding capital. You know, there was a year when I think we funded it at like $60,000. And we said at that time that we want to spend $2 million on capital every year. And we did that for a couple of years, and then we said, you know what? The, the things we're buying, there's inflationary pressure in those every year. And so the idea was that we would add $100,000 every year to the capital budget, that would reflect inflation, and that would also make sure that the amount of money we were spending on capital is in compliance with our financial policy. So, you know, $27,000 is basically, gets capital to a year-over-year increase of 100,000. So let me show you what that looks like. So what you have on the town is that the town increase drops from 3.3 percent to 2.8. So instead of, it's, it's a $759,000 increase. The education budget is just under a $2.2 million increase, which is 4.4 percent. Capital outlay goes up by $100,000, which is 4 and 1/2 percent. Workers' comp goes up by 25, which is 7.6 percent. If you go to the next slide, I, I just wanted to hone in on the town and education, but again, this is just how that, the proposal is in red, and you see how it kind of racks up with, with the prior years. On the town side, you know, a, a little more than the five-year, less, excuse me, a little more than the three-year average, a little less than the five-year average. If, if you look at the education budget, in dollars, it's, it's more than the average annual increase in the last three or five years, slightly less on a, on a percentage basis. I would point out that there are times, and I, you know, I watched the school committee meeting last night, and there are still some news that could unfold in the education budget. And I would just point out that if, if $200,000 comes out of the education budget with additional retirements and other things, 4.4 percent jumps to 4.8 percent. So it's, it's, you know, and, and I, I will say that, that for me, and again, I, I'm opening this up to you folks, I think what you've seen from me in the last couple of years is that when the education budget increase gets over 5 percent, that's when I get a little kind of nervous about, about some of the sustainability. I just want a couple of quick things. That's color-coded, it's kind of hard to see, but I would just point out that, that the town requests, and again, every one of them is worthy, what this budget proposal reflects is that we're only adopting 17 percent of the dollars. We, we're not adopting a lot of things. But I think the things we are adopting are important. I would also say that I think that if the municipal budget goes, if, if the workers' comp dollars and the firefighter comes off, and, and, and our budget ends up going below that, we will be in a mode where services are contracting, and I want to let the advisory committee know that. I think I've mentioned that the education budget is fluid and dynamic. There are many personnel-related things that, that still have the chance to unfold between now and the end of the school year. Just on the third bullet, you know, you guys heard me a couple weeks ago when we were talking about, when we were talking about our bond rating, that we, we really do have to be careful about the use of one-time money. It's, you know, it, it sometimes is an easy way to get us out of the situation today, but I would remind us that our town financial policy is there for a reason. Personally, I don't think capital outlay is, you know, we could look at the capital outlay schedule and say, well, we're going to take a truck, because we're not going to buy that truck again for another 20 years, so that's one-time money. Well, we're going to buy another truck next year. So there's always going to be a truck, or a thing. And I would also just say that, you know, while we think we might have some good news on insurance in fiscal year 18, we have a number of different variables at play. I don't, I think it's, it's premature to say we have any budget surpluses in 18. We're already over on snow and ice. We have a number of legal expenses particularly associated with all the work that's been done on some of the 40B permitting. And I'd make one other mention, which is that, you know, as this new tax law goes into effect, I think we, we have to be mindful of how the taxpayers are going to react to that. You know, in some ways, capping the property tax deduction means that some people will end up paying more for the same services. And I, I think collectively, for all of us, we, we don't really know what that means yet, but I think we have to experience it. Let me just close with a couple of quick things. You know, the, I know there's been a lot of discussion about, about revenue and budgets and sustainability and, and looking long-term, and I, I think those are all really important questions to ask. And I know that, I know that for, for some of the questions we've asked, answered, some others aren't asked. And I just want to shed a little light for, for you guys, and for the audience, and, and, you know, for our, for our partners in this town budgeting process, why for me, getting our arms around the long-term capital planning is, is, is a bit of a priority for me right now. You've, you've seen already that in the next five years, we have $17 million of capacity in our budget for capital projects. And, you know, we start saying foster school, library, fire stations, town hall, we get to between 50 and 80 million dollars even after reimbursements. We get there really quickly. And so if you look at those two numbers, what it tells you is that, is that if we want to move ahead with some or all of these, I, I believe that we will be in the next five years asking the citizens of Hingham for a debt exclusion. And a debt exclusion is permission to raise people's taxes for 20 years. We, we do that with capital projects that we can't fit in. And I just want to show you a couple of things I did with the, this is, I used the advisory committee, the model, the model that was created. So what, what this line looks like is, if, if you look on the left-hand side, you'll see that there are a lot of dollars. This is the model looking out over the next 10 years at what the average property tax increase will be in dollars for the average assessed value home. And the average assessed value home is over $700,000. But what that means is that, for example, in, in fiscal year 19, you know, that person's tax bill is going to go up by about $300. And this takes into account not just the 2 and 1/2 percent increase, but also any debt that we already have on the books. Now, I want to show you what happens. I took, I just assumed that in fiscal year 20, we were going to take on $25 million of new debt, so roughly about a third of what we think is potentially out there. And that's what happens to the tax bill. So, you know, if you look at it, it, it goes up by about $300. So that's the increase that the taxpayer will see. Now, again, it's $25 million in debt, it's a 3 and 1/2 percent interest rate. Hard to tell, is that, is that rate low, is that rate high? But one of the reasons that, you know, and, and people have heard me talking about hanging on to our excess fund balance and, you know, trying to squirrel away the revenue, is because when, when we built and opened the middle school, we were able to take some of that money, and, you know, if you look at that red line, we were actually able to reduce it. And so what, what happened, and by the way, if we took $2 million out of fund balance, we could drop those first four data points by about 25 percent each.
Wow.
So it's, you know, it's some significant money, and, you know, so let me just say, so that, so that's $25 million, and, you know, again, we have so many worthy capital projects. Take a look at what happens if we do another $25 million in 2022. So it goes up again by another couple hundred dollars. This is the slide that's keeping me awake at night a little bit, because we have many worthy projects, people who are very volunteers and staff who have invested a lot of time in advancing them, and I'm struggling with how we figure out how to sequence and pay for these in a way that we don't overburden the taxpayer. And as I think about some of the financing, I'm also realizing that some of these projects are going to come before us very quickly. And so I, you know, as I said, this is, this is keeping me awake a little bit at night. The, the last thing, you know, so how do we mitigate the impact of this, because it's, it could be a big, a big increase? I think we need to try to look for ways to reduce the cost of these projects to the taxpayers, which means things like this non-excluded debt capacity that we're trying to create. I think we need to maximize state funding and grants, which we're doing. I mean, if we can get into the MSBA, we're going to get, we're going to get, whatever the solution is, we're going to pay 65 cents on the dollar for it, and that's, that's a wonderful way to bring dollars in. I think we should also look at, like what we did with the meals tax money for the middle school as a way to reduce the first couple of years. I think with each of these projects, we have to manage the timing and control the costs. You know, I think the, the MSBA programs are really good, because the state essentially says, this is the standard. And I think it helps, it helps kind of equalize things. We need to make sure we're applying that same discipline to all the other projects. But I also do think that, you know, this board and, and as a town, we may need to defer, say no, to some of those projects. In my opinion, the one that's shovel-ready does not mean the first to go. And I, I, I really do think we got to get our arms around it. And I, I guess where I come to, and the reason I brought this in, in the context of the budget, is that as I'm looking at that with the, with, with our borrowing, I'm very focused on living within our operating budget to the extent we can. And, and I say that understanding that there are many, many demands in, in many departments, and there are many worthy initiatives out there. I think in the next couple of years, if we can target our budget increases not to exceed the recent historical averages, I think we're doing pretty good. I think if, you know, that, on the town side, if, you know, 3 percent would be great. I think, you know, with, with the education budget, it's been, you know, north of 4 and 1/2. I, I think if, if, if we could get there, that would be a good thing to do. I also think that, that this strikes me as, as a time, and, and I know that, you know, there are others who feel this way, but, you know, we should probably start perhaps taking a closer look at, are there some ways that, as we're doing business, that we can do them in a, in a little bit of a different manner, so that, you know, so that we can, we can fund some of the new things that we want to do within existing dollars. And I realize those opportunities are few and far between, given how personnel-intensive our business is. But as I think about us going to the taxpayers and asking for money for capital projects, I think the more that we can all collectively together demonstrate to the public that we're using everybody's tax dollars wisely, I, I just think it helps us all here. So I'm just going to close with the seven deadly sins of public finance, as we continue our work. Balancing the budget with one-time fixes, ignoring the long-term consequences of a deal, taking on too much. I think in Hingham, we're kind of guilty of that sometimes. Misapplying a temporary windfall, shortchanging our pension obligations. I think we're pretty good at that, we're pretty good at not doing that. Making real, making unrealistic projections about rate of return, and ignoring financial checks and balances. And again, you know, I look at our audit reports, our audit committee, I, I think we, we avoid a lot of these, but... So, Tom, if I could maybe ask you to go back to slide... Could you please go back to slide 14? And maybe even 13? You know, I, I guess as a starting point, I, I would just sort of ask my colleagues, you know, in terms of kind of this methodology to try to settle out the budget, are you, are you comfortable following it?
So, so your argument here is the 275 in building permit money will fold in in FY 19 to be part of the, part of the tax base in FY 19, or in FY 20?
Correct.
In FY 20, okay.
I see it as a low-risk use of one-time money.
Okay. And we have those, we've, we can, we have line of sight to those, to those, to that 275 figure, do you think? We think...
Yes, we have, we have received building permit revenue from a couple of the projects that will, that will turn into new growth in, in 20 and 21.
20, okay.
You know, the, the one risk that we have, you know, if, if you look at your financial forecast, this past year, in FY 18, there was $909,000 of one-time money budgeted.
Yep.
To kind of close the gap.
Yep.
That was, that was building permit revenue.
Okay.
We didn't collect it all this year.
Yep.
We're going to, we're actually going to be a little short on that, which is why I've, I've been sort of saying, let's... saying, let's not get too far ahead of ourselves.
Well, which is why I asked the question about.
Yeah. You know, and I guess I look at it too, Karen, and I think, okay, we're a $108 million enterprise, we have, we have our excess fund balance. While I feel like it's a bit risky, I feel like the position of our fund balance gives us the ability to take that little bit of a risk.
Okay.
I think if that number were a lot higher, I'd be uncomfortable because I think we counted on one-time money in 18 that's not going to materialize.
Right, right. Well, and, you know, the fiscal discipline that I think we brought to the advisory committee, you know, you included, was to be very careful about incorporating new growth fixtures and figures into permanent funds. Because we got burned by that in a big way. So, you know, to the extent, again, we believe we have line of sight to those dollars, and I would agree with you, it's of a magnitude that we should be able to absorb some portion of if, you know, if we needed to.
Yep. I'd also just point out that if you look at the fund balance line in 17, that's a very large number because it includes over a million dollars for the library roof. So I, you know, that was, that was an unusual item.
That was an anomaly.
That was a really unusual item.
Yep.
But I actually went back and looked, and really, it's only been in the last couple of years that we've used one-time money to balance the budget. And I just, I want to be careful we're not reaching because, especially when you consider that the majority of our requests and new things are personnel-driven, I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we can honor an employment agreement going out into the future.
Right. And so, Mary, we would build that into the fund balance line item, is that where that would fall?
Yes. So what would, the mechanics of it would be that, right now, if you look on the forecast document, in other revenue, the third line down, we would put $275,000 in that. So we would take it, we would take it out of fund balance, but the building permit revenue this year that is beyond what we expected to come in will replace it.
Okay, okay. And is this something that you would review with the advisory committee, Tom? Or?
Yeah. I would, so my advisor will be making their budget recommendations next week. I'll review all of this, this plan with them.
Okay.
I'll be with Lucy and Donna every week.
Okay. I'm just wondering, you know, the advisory committee would then have to sort of sign on to the use of the 275 in order to?
Sure.
In order to?
I mean, look, they're going to have to sign on to everything. So I think what we do is we give them a path.
Yep.
And we explain it, and then we trust them to?
Yep, okay.
So are you okay with that?
I am. And I want to thank you for the presentation. I think you explained it very clearly. As in, to recall, a similar conversation with building permits a couple of years ago as well.
Yeah.
But I just want to say to the citizens of the town, I became a selectman when it was a AAA bond-rated community, and I tend to leave it, that's why. So I believe in fiscal discipline strongly. And in light of the projects that we're looking at, I think we really have to satisfy the residents, perhaps not beyond a reasonable doubt, but by clear and convincing evidence that we're spending the tax dollar very carefully, prudently, and sensibly, so that they have confidence when we ask them to basically pay more taxes. And, you know, with the Republican tax bill that was just passed, you know, I don't know how that's going to impact, you know, my fellow residents' pocketbook, but I'm not liking the idea of a cap. I really am not happy with that prospect. And I'm sure I'm not the only one in town. So, you know, I think the direction you're going is the right one. The choices that you've highlighted.
Well, let's talk about those because?
Well, and I just want to back up too and just say, you know, when I was on the advisory committee, like you, John Asher was the chair before me. And John, John was very helpful in framing the conversation about a pathway to the budget. It doesn't have to be everybody's pathway, but he, in providing that leadership, showed a pathway. And I just think that the amount of time and energy and effort and analysis that you put into this document in creating a pathway that's founded in the details of the forecast, you know, is, we may veer off here and there, but it's a solid foundation to have this discussion, and I really appreciate the time that you took with it.
I agree.
Well, let's talk, let's move over to 14. And, you know, one thing I would just mention before we start talking about some of these dollars is that I would actually propose that, again, as I was looking at these, I look at the ending point for the budget. So the fact that the education budget came down by $54,000 last night, I'm just suggesting we give that right back. I don't, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm looking at?
Yeah, I hear you, yep.
You know, so, you know, and again, Paul and Karen, you may want to look at, if you look at page 17 in the handout, you'll see, you'll see all the town requests, and you'll see that the workers' comp is there.
So can I ask one question that I saw dropped off, and I was looking at my notes? Because one of the things that I was really interested in, in terms of the town administrator priorities, was the hiring of a social worker within the Department of Health that would also cross over and serve, in particular, Veterans Affairs. Is that now being paid for by reduction on the other staff? Is that off the list? Where is that, Tom?
So that's, that's an offset. It's a reallocation of these.
Okay, so that'll happen?
Yes.
Okay.
The dollars, the dollars are in there for it. It was basically reallocation.
Reallocation.
Right. And just, you know, for the benefit of the audience, when Tom started on this, there were some things he wanted to do. And we said, look, if there's some things you want to do, find an offset. So in community planning and in the Board of Health, he looked for ways to realign the work and the staff to create capacity for the dollars. And, you know, my feeling was, those dollars ought to remain within that budget.
Yeah, no, and I, so I guess that was the only other priority that I felt, I mean, to your point, they're all worthy of funding. But, you know, when I was ticking down my list of priorities, that social worker was near the top. So I'm glad that we're able to provide that service within the budget dollars that we had already allocated.
And we've reallocated additional dollars to the building inspector role, which, and to the ZBA, which, you know, I think we've all noticed that the community planning department, between all the zoning issues, the development projects, the marijuana, the marijuana articles are just tapped out. So again, those departments are showing a reduction in dollars, but some of those dollars were reallocated. Was there, you know, if you look at slide 17, basically, what you see in the far-right-hand column in red, you know, those are the four things that are left out of the list. Again, I threw this out as a starting point.
I mean, you know, those were my top, adding the firefighter, and I just think it makes sense to have Leslie Badger Narcan certified. It's just, it's too pervasive. She's out and about around town. She would, you know, she would likely be on scene for one of these emergencies, and to not have her equipped and trained, I just think, for $624, doesn't make any sense. And the addition of the firefighter, you know, including uniform and turnout gear, was, again, my top priority. So in addition to the social worker, which we've already taken care of, and the community planning piece, you know, I was coming out in the same place, Mary.
I remember we wanted a firefighter last year, but didn't get one. So maybe that'll happen this year. I continue to pine for a grant writer, I won't lie.
This is the sixth year.
Yeah.
Sixth year.
Somebody could do that and generate some money for the town, that'd be great. I do, I do share the view that the animal control officer, to perhaps the ordinary citizen would be perceived as a police officer, and there'd be every expectation that he or she could perform that life-saving function if called upon to do so. So, I understand all that.
You know, to me, the workers' comp, I think we have three, three things in the budget that we know are, you know, a little bit underfunded. We've got legal services, we've got snow and ice, and we've got workers' comp. And I think, you know, last year, we added a little bit to legal, I think we added a little to snow and ice. You know, this is something that we would have to go back for reserve fund transfer for, and it just sort of seems to me that, you know, that expense is going to happen. And I think it's a good financial practice to reflect it. What about the capital piece? The, so the capital, essentially, what, the change in capital is basically a reduction of about $64,000. And I didn't, I didn't have a specific project, but I think, you know, I think if a budget in this, in this arena is going to be adopted, I think the town is saying, the town is saying no to some very worthy things, the school department is saying no to some very worthy things. And it seems to me that we should all have a little skin in the game in this. I would, I would probably look to the capital outlay committee to reallocate those dollars. You know, one, one thing I noticed is that there's about $55,000 for security cameras for the library. If there's the potential for a library project in the next couple of years, I wonder if maybe we should hold off on that because, because work in the library could cause that to change. But I would, you know, sort of vote a number. And I think we need to have, you know, we need to understand that, you know, some of the very worthy municipal capital projects could, could be deferred as a result of that.
Go ahead.
No, no, no.
Sorry. I'm fine with that, because, to be honest with you, the alternative is just going down the list and picking them off arbitrarily, and I don't think that's a good move.
Right. And I just feel like I don't have necessarily the expertise of the timeline for some of this stuff. You know, I guess to your point, Mary, though, I do think that, that capital should share in the, in the plus-minus here. And, you know, I think in all fairness, you know, the $2 million-plus-dollar mark that we set within the financial policy really understates our commitment to capital. When you look at the warrant articles that we will pass as well, that contribute to capital. So I think as a town, between the warrant articles and our capital outlay budget, we can and do fulfill the promise that we've made to the town to prioritize, you know, our capital infrastructure. So.
I think, I, I think if I did the math right, a $64,000 reduction still keeps us within the range of the financial policy. And, you know, again, I mean, the way I looked at it was, if we kind of put capital into the mix on this, it provided a little bit, it provided a little bit more money for an operating budget that I thought could put it, could put it to good use.
Well, and, you know, and I think if you look at the year-over-year percentage increases, as you suggested at the end of your presentation, stay within sort of the historic trends. You know, I think that little bit of capital money helps get us there in each of those, in each of those sort of budget baskets. So, but, you know, having said that, we're also not balancing the budget on the back of capital. We're asking capital to participate in the reallocation of dollars within the budget.
So if?
Did you just say, if I did the math right?
The math right.
You didn't do the math right. We're in trouble.
Well, I will say, I, I did do, I did do all this math, and I asked somebody to check it. So I do believe that this, that this ends up, this ends up at a zero. And again, you know, you know, maybe this is a good time to just see if there's anybody in the audience who, who wishes to comment before we, you know, make, make some votes.
Here we go.
Any comments from anybody in the audience? Hi, Liza, come on up.
Hi, Liza O'Reilly, I'm Chair of the School Committee. Thank you for your due diligence on this. I know this is a very challenging year, and we will digest all of this and work with what we have to work with. You know, last night, we had on our calendar to vote, and we simply voted the department's recommendation because we wanted to be able to hear input from everyone before we made any decisions about what direction to go in. So this is helpful. We have been listening to the advisory committee as well, so thank you for that direction. I would also like to say that we look forward to working with you as we look to the future. We recognize the challenges of the capital projects for the town and the growth factors. But we also want to work collaboratively on all of the cost pressures that all of us are facing. You know, the school department recognizes that by the nature of the structure of education in the state of Massachusetts, our costs go up more than 2.5%. And we have other costs in town that are going up more than 2.5%. And we just want to work with everyone together to set that long-range path on our costs while looking at the realities of the revenues. So we hope we can make that, that effort with you in looking at the reality. And so that seems like every year, you know, we're getting Groundhog Day the movie of having to deal with this and sort ourselves out each year. School committee would like to work with all the other committees and set more of a long-range vision, as, you know, Mary started charting out, so that we can address where are our challenges. And, you know, not only for the schools, but the town departments and the other retirement benefits and OPEPs and all those other things that we face in capital projects. So we hope that we can begin that process sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
So that's, that's a request of us, but, and we will go back and deliberate our budgets as well. So thank you.
Thank you. You know, and it's, you know, I think about, you know, this, I know this all feels like really hard, and I watched the school committee last night, and I was really impressed with the very thoughtful discussion that took place. And everybody was jumping in on it, everybody had different opinions, but everything that was said was, was thoughtful and on point. And as hard as this feels to a lot of us in a lot of cases, I'm also reminded that we're very fortunate in this community to have a lot of the resources that we do. And, you know, and I, so. Anyone else?
What's up with the sound?
Okay, so I think we can take a couple, a couple votes. And what I'd suggest, because the advisory committee, so that we can sort of chart our path for the advisory committee's consideration, I'm going to start out by recommending, and I'm, Tom, if you could go over to slide 15. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend to the advisory committee an FY19 education budget in the amount of $51,932,952.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then what I would suggest we do for, well, then let's, let's go to capital outlay. In addition to, there's a proposed amount up on the slide of $2,320,000. In addition to, there's a proposed amount up on the slide of $2,327. I would ask my colleagues if you would consider, when I, I had a little bit of follow-up on the capital outlay budget with, with a member of the capital outlay committee. There's an item under Recreation Department for FY20 that's called East Street Skatehouse. And I think that that's probably a very, very worthy project. I seem to remember we did something with CPC on that a few years ago.
We did, yeah.
I just look at the backlog of capital outlay items, and as worthy as that is, I don't think it belongs on the capital outlay budget. The recreation, this is, this is being sourced, it looks like it's sourced as being funded from the taxpayer levy. And I would just like to make a motion that it, I realize it's not until FY20, but I think sometimes when things get on the capital outlay schedule, they stay on the schedule. And I just feel like that's a very different project than many of the other things that are here.
So, that, Mary, so the, there is a footnote that talks about user rate charges, providing funding for, so sewer, country club, and rec. But you're saying this particular project's been listed, so it looks like a levy project?
In, in the follow-up that I had with the, with Libby, she had indicated to me that it was perhaps part of the levy. I just, you know, if, if it's part of user charges, that's fine.
Yeah.
But I, I would, you know, perhaps just like to, in addition to making a motion for the capital outlay dollars, make a motion to remove the East Street Skatehouse from FY20 if it is funded out of the levy.
Okay, okay.
I, I just-
I mean, it-
Our levy's, our levy's got so much pressure on it that I, I view that as a little bit different.
Okay. So, in some ways, it's a little bit of a clarification, whether it is or isn't?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion on the FY19 capital outlay? It's, it's up on, up on the screen around 15.
Sure. Move to support the recommendations set forth by the capital outlay committee, and their final report is presented and here amended in the amount of $2,327,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I will make a motion that, to the extent that the FY20 East Street Skatehouse is to be funded by the levy, proposed to be funded by the levy, that it be removed from the capital outlay plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'd suggest we vote the workers' comp number separately.
Why do we, why do we need to do that? Because it's not in the, it's not in-
It's not in that town budget.
Okay.
So, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Want to do that?
Sure, I move a workers' comp line on, line on a budget for FY19 in the amount of $355,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this last vote with the town budget, this is actually, if you look on Article Six on page two of the forecast, that's the line it represents. So, yeah, that's the line it represents. So, I think if we just reference the Article Six forecast and that particular line item, because right now, it's $27 million. Yeah, oops, I'm sorry.
I think I have a different-
I'm looking at an old forecast.
Because I've got 27, 263, 460.
Sorry, I had an old forecast in front of me.
So, that's what I've got.
Right, so that number is-
Different than, this is slightly higher, right? Because you've included four and five?
Okay, so, yes. Oh, you know what, I included Articles Four and Five. So, it is, I think I can pull that number up for you. That number, yeah. Let's vote. Article, Article Five is, I think it's 378, 521. 378, 541, so.
378?
Yeah, 378, 541 is the, is the Article Four amount, so I just, I think we just have to back that out. Which is, okay, this is when my math gets skewed. 281 minus 378, 541. I get $27,141,740, which should be where it, yeah.
You got the same, okay.
Okay.
And so, we don't, why, do we, do we have to vote Article Four separately, or it just gets carried there?
We already voted Article Four last week as a warrant article.
Oh, right, right, right.
Right, so we just, we just would vote, if we want to effectuate this recommendation, we would need to vote $27,141,740.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Tom, I'm going to, I can, you and I tomorrow can forward this to the advisory committee, but I would, I would also ask that we make it available as, as we have with these other documents on the website. Okay, so next on the agenda is we have Article W. Who's, who's coming up to talk about W with us? John, is that you, or is it? Thank you. So, Article W is the high school gym wall. And, John, we received information about the proposed change in scope, and council has given us the language for, for the recommendation.
Oh, great.
So, have you seen that?
I don't believe, if, if council has changed the language, they?
No, it's the language that we received from Dr. Gallo this afternoon. He, he looked at it and approved it.
Oh, okay, so we looked at this language and approved, okay, yes. Okay, great, excellent, that's good.
John, I don't think that, I know it's been discussed in the school committee, but I don't think it's been discussed in this room. And could you just give us and, and the viewing audience just a, a little bit of a sense of what's going on with the high school gym wall?
Sure, yes. So, at, at the Kingham High School, in the high school gymnasium, and many of you may be familiar with the gymnasium, all around the top of the gym is clever story windows, or the glass block windows. And a couple of months ago, when we went up there to inspect it, actually looking at the air handles and, and doing regular preventative maintenance, we noticed that we saw some cracking in the windows. So, with that, we've called in a couple of structural engineers to take a look at those windows. Some history on that, back when we did the renovation in the high school in late 1990s, early 2000, actually, I think it was probably 1998, 1999, one of those walls got changed, and three of the walls did not get changed. And there's glass block windows in each one of the four walls that surround the, the upper gym. And so, we noticed some cracking, there was some water penetrating into some of the, the block windows. They were actually created sort of like a set of ice cubes, you know, with one layer, then another layer, and another layer, you know, all penetrating into the inside. And what it does is it gives natural light into the gymnasium. And so, they are important, you don't want to just board them up, you want to replace them, preferably not with anything high glare, because sports would be playing in certain times of day, you know, you'd have a certain glare. So, that's why when you look at these, they always look like ice cubes, and they're a bit foggy, but they do end up letting in very good daylight. So, with that, we had some structural engineers come in, actually two of them, to take a peek. We wanted to evaluate really the safety issue of the structure. So, the structural engineers did look at it. They, they made a determination that, you know, that these windows should be in fact replaced, and actually were taking some action at this point now. There's, we, we did get an opinion also that the gym is safe at this time. However, be, in order to get the funding, we thought that we would undertake an effort to put some netting around the inside, interior of the gym, so that we wouldn't have any of these pieces of glass block possibly blowing in should there be a significant storm. Because we did in fact see some of the glass had dropped off on the outside, and that's probably a function of the water getting in between the glass and, and freezing, and those glasses popping off. So, engineers took a look at it. Structurally, the building is structurally sound, however, all of these glass windows, three walls, I believe, are, were the previous building, or they, from the, the day the building was built, and one of the walls was replaced back in 1999. That wall's still in pretty good shape, but it, it does have some cracks as well. So, in order, when we do this job, when we're proposing to do this job, we propose to do all four walls. The standard for these glass blocks, it no longer meets code, so we'd actually put it to, we, we'd actually use a Cowwall product in order to replace that. So, looking at the, so with that, they, they definitely have to be replaced, the structural engineers, they said they do have to be replaced. They're not gonna, they won't last forever. So, what we're doing preventatively inst, with this week, is we have some netting going in on the inside. That will all be up, that will last for a couple of years or, or longer until we get this job done, so that we can go forward to get the funding for the project. Look, it's, initially, we thought we would try to go and do the entire project all at once. However, because of the timeline and trying to get the funding for the design and then getting out to bid and the procurement laws, there's really no way we could get the funding, do a designer selection, because a designer or an architect or a structural engineer, designer, architectural firm needs to do this design so that they can ensure that, do all the inspections around the perimeter of the, of the, the glass block walls, make sure the walls are all intact, make sure all the mortar joints that have support, that are supported with the knee wall are all intact, all the structural metals fine. So, they'd have to do a, a good design that would take several weeks, and then we'd have to go out to bid, that could take a few more weeks, and then we'd want to have this job done during the summer. You really have to have the job done during the summer, because we can't really have occupants within there, because there'll be, all these glass blocks will be coming off of the, off of the rooftop. So, we're working with the school committee, we actually started thinking a little bit differently about the timeline. And so, what we're asking for this year is a warrant article for designer services. So, this would be the designer services in the amount of $60,000, just to do the design work. So, the designer would go up there, they would assess the overall structure. They would design what the, the project would look like, the installation of the Cowwall, and all the detailed specifications that would be necessary, so that we can take that in, and they would assist us in bidding out that project. We'd, after, if we, Tom, would just secure the funding, we'd get that project, probably started the designer selection sometime in September. So, that would take several weeks. We'd have the designer up there, probably by October, November, December, they'd have the design. We'd go out to bid and say, we want to get the job done in July, and we'd get a hard bid back, so that we come back to the town next April with a real hard figure, you know, for what this project will cost. There's, you know, estimates, the estimates that we came in were somewhere between $600,000 and $1 million, and we thought that was too big of a range. We don't want to say what we, so we think this would be a better approach, so actually, let's get the design work done and secure this designer to do the work. Let's get it out to bid, let's get a, a real good price for the town for next April in order to do the repair and, you know, get it scheduled for next summer at the same time. Meanwhile, we've already taken the precaution of making sure that we're safe for a year, or for the, you know, until the funding were to come. This, this would last more than a year. I don't expect it at all to blow in, but you, you never know, we could have significant winds. This will protect it should any, any shot or little piece. I, I don't believe there's any risk of anything collapsing or anything like that. I don't want to like make this sound like it's a significant safety issue. But when you go there, you say, okay, we have to make sure that, you know, we protect the town's liability and respect. So, that's, that's the, the project and what we're trying to do, we're trying to secure that design. They'll, they'll create the detailed design, they will help us bid the document, secure the contractor, and project manage that contractor. When we get into the summer for, that's what the $60,000 would cover, but we will have to come back next April and ask for the cost for the contractor that will do the job.
Questions?
Yeah, hey, John, how you doing?
Good.
Are you saying that it's the intent to replace the glass block with glass block or some other technology?
It's, it's another technology, Paul, it's Cowwall. It's a, it's a product called Cowwall. It, it's sort of, it looks like, it looks like gym windows, it's very, very well insulated, it's more of a fiber, it's got a very good R-value, and, you know, that, that's what all the schools are doing now.
And that has the effect of letting natural light into the building?
Yes, yeah. Because it's translucent, and there's, there's different shades of it, you know, so we'd make sure the shade didn't produce too much glare. There's, I, I'm sorry I didn't bring a picture, but there's some, there's some good pictures that, that looks like a very nice project.
How long is that anticipated to last, all things being equal?
That's a good question. I don't know that, I'm sorry. That, I don't know.
Hopefully shorter than the summer.
Well, longer than the glass block.
Longer than the glass block, you would hope, right, you know? They come in panels. You, you've probably seen them at other gyms, like probably when you're looking up at a gym and you see people working out, that's probably Cowwall there, because that's the pictures that I have of what the product actually looks like. And I've seen it also on pictures of, from other schools that have this Cowwall on their seller.
Are all the glass blocks compromised, so everything has to be replaced, or is it piece by piece?
On, on three sides certainly, and on the other side, we see some, just as a couple, you know? So, it's not every one that's, that's cracked, but there's, there's evidence of mortar cracking in there, the possibility of water having gotten in. There's evidence of actually water within some of the blocks, on, on the older stuff. And on the newer section, there's a couple of blocks that are cracked, which is basically indicative that they're going to go.
Can you, can you save some of the blocks and use them to patch in some of the less deteriorated walls?
We actually have some, we actually have some of the old blocks, because I think most likely when we were doing the high school project back several years ago, back in the 90s, they, they probably ran out of money, and that's why they didn't do all four walls. So, we had some blocks, but as I understand, those blocks don't meet code any longer. No one's using them any longer.
Because they crack.
Well, I mean, when you think about it, the original ones have been there since, what, in the, if the building's 50. So, I mean, they, they've had a good life.
Had a good run.
You know, the, and, and the ones that were built 20 years ago, and there's, there's some stress that's apparent, as I said, there's a couple of cracks, but I don't think you'd ever look at that and say, oh, wow, that's a safety issue, you know? That's like, okay, hey, let's, how do we repair that for now? You know, do we put some mortar there, do we just make sure water doesn't get in? But the older ones certainly are, they, they showed their age, they've had their useful life, and that's why, that's really what prompted us to, to put the netting on in the inside, to make sure that, you know, we just keep the public safe at all times.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I was going to ask the dumb question about, you know, do we need to replace the windows, or, you know, did you think about boarding it up, and what, what do you think that would do to the, sort of the, the look and feel of the gym?
I think boarding it up would make the gym too dark. You know, of course, in a contingency, we say, well, okay, well, what if something did blow in with this netting? We'd put a piece of board over it, you know? The whole wall's not going to go, but you, you could lose a block. We'd put a little piece of board over it, perhaps glue it up there, you know, to, to keep it stable until the job gets done. But, yeah, it would be an eyesore. You, you wouldn't want to darken up the gym like that. I don't think you could produce a natural light that could, could, could make it look the way we'd want it to look.
Okay, I mean, I, I guess, I, I'm usually in the gym for evening games, so I, I don't, I don't really notice it, so that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's true, you, you wouldn't notice it, but, you know, once you, once you've been up there, and it's like, next time you'll notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, you'll see, actually, when in town meeting, when we go to town meeting, everybody will see the netting. everybody will see the netting, you know, up and around. It's going to be a white netting, so, you know, it'll be a little clearer, so.
Okay.
We'll reset the dais so that the...
We'll be out of the fray.
Slur on that inside wall.
It's safe, it's safe. I don't, you know...
Glue with our hard hats on, for more than, for more than one reason.
The netting is just in the event of small shots, you know? I don't, no one expects this thing to cave in, but this is something we need to pay attention to.
And then, did you say the, I'm sorry, I missed the end of it. Did you say the $60,000 for design funds would include project manager costs?
That's my expectation, yes, absolutely.
And then, you're replacing heating units as well?
No, the, so the warrant is stated broadly. The language is stated more broadly there because as the designer and architect and structural engineer get up there and they assess the situation, that, you know, there's a knee wall that's probably about three or four feet, and then above that is the block windows, which basically look like ice cubes just stacked on top of each other. So I would expect them to do an assessment. Some of the mortar has evidence of cracking, you know, water could have potentially got in. If it got down and seeped down into the, into the knee wall, it could have potentially got underneath the roof, which could have wet the roof. And, you know, so if that had the thing there, these air handlers are about, you know, three or four feet away from the knee wall. So if we had to replace that roof section, the air handles are also 20 years old and they've come upon their useful life, too. If the work that's necessitated by the winter replacement impacts the roof, we should probably replace that air handler at the same time. And I think we'd know that when we came, you know, in the bid.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, because they're going to do that assessment. So that's where it's stated more broadly because if the project were to penetrate the roof, we would probably, we should do, as a town, and I think it would be the best for the town, we should do the air handlers at the same time because we're going to do the roof, and no sense in doing a roof and then coming back a year or two later.
Putting back a 20-year-old air handler, right, okay. And so the language change in the warrant, will that be in the recommended motion? Or was that somehow incorporated into what we're seeing? Do you know that?
Tom, you're probably better able to answer that.
So my understanding had always been that whatever the language was that was submitted when the warrant closed is the language we have to deal with and that any corrections to the language would appear in the recommended motion. Is that what's going on here?
So we can do that. John suggested that this language was not substantially different from the originally submitted language.
Okay.
So that you can just simply vote, change the original submission language to reflect what's here today.
Okay.
And then advisor will assess their recommendation, their recommended motion, as they always do.
So we'll be taking two votes on this to adopt the language and then to advance the article.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, you have one more question?
Just a final question, John. Has the building inspector looked at all this?
The building inspector, the building inspector has not seen this. However, we did contact him today. I mean, we had the fire inspector out there, we've had the town engineer out there. It's, we hadn't even looked at this as, you know, a significant issue, okay? But since we were doing this preventative thing, we alerted the building inspector. And, you know, he did ask us, he says, "Well, I need a stamp plan from the architects," which we got, and a letter ensuring that it's safe, which we got, so that we can commence with the work. But, you know, that was probably a mis-sight on our part, you know? But as I said, Paul, as we, you go up there, you look at it and you say, "Okay, we gotta fix this. We gotta do a repair here." You know, "I wonder if this is a safety issue," you know? And that's where you get the instructional engineer in and say, "Hey, how are we doing here? Is this okay? Is this right?" Because, you know, it needs that specific expertise. And, you know, so they said, "These should definitely be replaced." There was nobody, there wasn't one of them that said, "You shouldn't replace these," you know? And then we said, "Okay, how do we make sure that it's safe for everybody? Because it's going to take a while to get some funding." You know, and we talked about, we got a little design to put the netting up. Some of the netting requires some welding, so we did contact the fire inspector in the building's office. And Chris went out and took a look and said, "Yep, okay, you can do that." But I think it was just an oversight on our part. We should have told Mike earlier, but we did contact Mike.
All right, well, he knows now, so he can take a look if he thinks he should. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. I think in light of what's unfolded in this, this is the sensible approach. I think it's, there's still a lot of uncertainty as to the scope of this. And I remember a few years ago when we started to do the library roof, when we got in there, we understood that the repair was much more substantial. And it was difficult. We had few funding options. And so this is the right thing. I would just, you know, note to my colleagues, and, you know, this is the type of repair that, this is not intended for the capital outlay budget. This doesn't, you know, this needs to be a warrant article next year. This is a repair that's needed for a town asset, and we should treat this the way we did the library and other buildings where we have structural things. And this should, this should come out of town funds and not out of capital outlay, so.
No, but to my point earlier, it's still an investment in our capital.
Absolutely, yep, yep. I just don't want to be in a situation next year, for example, where there's a suggestion that this, that this in some way be funded out of the school department capital outlay.
Got you, yep.
This gets funded out of a different bucket.
Yep.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Dot, something to add? Please, thank you.
Dorothy Gallo, Superintendent of Schools, One Volunteer Road. I just wanted to comment on Karen's question. We did make a suggestion last night that because this project has been talked about widely as we've had school committee meetings, for example, and through the budget process, that there will be people who will be assuming that we're going forward with the construction as opposed to this new plan. So we made the suggestion to advisory committee, Judge Danus is the person who'll be writing the comment, that he give perhaps a little more background that this is a change in the scope that might not be apparent if you simply read the item.
That's a good idea.
Well, because it definitely, you know, people like to know, "Okay, you're going to be back. We're going to do this." To Mary's point, we're doing it responsibly. We are going to, you know, undertake an analysis of that physical site so that we know everything that we're getting into before we get into it, and then we're going to come back to you with a number. So I think to your point and Mary's as well, this is the prudent path to analyze the project and be able to give Town Meeting a solid number on what the project's going to cost.
Okay. Do you want to make the first motion? We have to adopt the language.
Just follow it as it's set out. Move that we adopt the following language as replacement, Article W. Article W, "Will the town raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds or sum of money to assess and provide designer services for the replacement of the glass block windows at the high school gymnasium and related work which may involve structural support work including masonry, repointing, flashing, roof repair or replacement, replacing heating units and/or other ancillary work which could be, which would be necessitated by the replacement project or act on anything related thereto."
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do the next one?
I move favorable action on Article W, "Funds for High School Gymnasium Windows."
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for coming.
Tom, are you going next door? Advisory's going to take this up? I think they're... Okay, okay. I was losing track of which ones they were taking up, okay? Thanks, everybody. Okay, the next item we have on our agenda is Article W, which is to amend the general bylaw regarding a ban on marijuana establishments.
Article O?
Article O.
Article O, what did I say?
W.
Sorry. Tom, do you want to just kind of orient the board on this? And I would just note, as our school committee colleagues are leaving, we do have your resolution in our packet, so that will be part of the meeting record on Article O.
Sure, thank you. So Article O is adding a general bylaw, to amend the general bylaws of the town of Hingham to insert a new bylaw banning the use of recreational marijuana, or marijuana not medically prescribed as it's now being termed by the state.
And so this is, as we've talked before, our colleagues on the planning board are in the midst of doing some great work to prepare a zoning bylaw, asking Town Meeting whether or not it wants to allow or ban these establishments. This is sort of a belt and suspenders, as Susan Murphy would say. The planning board is also undertaking the work to develop regulations so that should Town Meeting vote that it wants to authorize these establishments, they are regulated. Comments from my colleagues?
So this vote tonight is really to just advance this warrant article to Town Meeting? Is that what we're voting, or are we indicating, are we indicating a viewpoint on this? What are we, what's our vote?
I think we can do either. I think we should specify because I would just say that, you know, when you vote in favor of something, I think unless it's specified, Town Meeting would assume that it means you are supportive of the action. So if our vote is procedural, we would just want to follow up with the advisory committee with the group that's working on this so that that's noted.
Okay, I just didn't know. So one of the frustrations for me, I have to say, is, you know, in part, I guess, you know, because this was a voter petition article and not a legislatively crafted program, there are just a lot of loose ends, you know, as we know from the reports coming out of the cannabis commission themselves. So one of the things I think that's going to be interesting procedurally is a general ban, as I understand it, needs to pass Town Meeting by a majority vote. A zoning ban needs to pass Town Meeting by a two-thirds vote because it's a zoning, would be a zoning bylaw, I guess. And we've all been asking, "Okay, so what happens if Town Meeting bans it generally but doesn't ban it for zoning purposes, ban marijuana for zoning purposes?" My understanding, my further understanding is the Attorney General's Office has been recommending the Susan Murphy belt and suspenders approach. And that, and we are, we are following the guidance from the Attorney General's Office in terms of putting forward to Town Meeting those votes for consideration. But I still haven't gotten an answer to my question, to my question, so, I don't know.
You know, my understanding is the same. I watched what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts did last November with interest. I frankly was a little perplexed at the opt-outs that were made available, but be that as it may, that's a procedural remedy available to the voters. This community chose to do that. I do see some ironies in all of this, to be candid with you. If we've got, you know, an outright prohibition in this town, but you just shoot over to Rockland or down the boulevard and, you know, there you are. I see whatever is done here by the community with respect to any kind of ban is something will probably morph into something else going forward in the future. I just, you know, if the town votes consistently with the position it took at the polls in November.
Yep.
That's kind of where I am on it. I, you know, I will also note that, you know, we're a community that gets a fair amount of revenue from liquor licenses and, you know, I don't want to get into the whole discussion about it, but I just, the town will vote what the town votes. We took a vote last year on dogs in Bear Cove and, you know, we voted to advance it forward, notwithstanding any personal positions we held. I intend to do the same tonight.
I guess that would be my preference.
I mean, I'll go along with people. I do think we want to specify because, for example, on Bear Cove last year, we did strike an opinion on that as well. We offered to advance and then we offered an opinion. So I just, I think it will be important for us to clarify what our vote represents because I think if we're being deliberate in that, I've, you know, like both of you have, I've, you know, I've read all the materials. I've had conversations with Jen Gay Smith, the chair of the planning board, who's doing a wonderful job. I thought Mary Savage-Donham's summary that she wrote for us for last week was particularly helpful because it netted a lot of things out for me. And I think what, you know, what really strikes me is that there's still a lot of moving parts in this. I will tell you, and in talking to Jen, you know, the planning board wants to do its work so that if, so that if Town Meeting votes, there are regulations in place. I really worry about the aspect of place. You know, planning and zoning regulations are time, manner, and place. And I really worry that a discussion about place and regulations has the potential to pit parts of Hingham against other parts of Hingham. And I really just don't think that's going to be good for the community. I remember that started to happen a few years ago when we were doing tattoo parlors and medical marijuana. And, you know, in some of this, the way I look at it is, you know, Hingham leads on some things. We lead on funding OPEB. We lead on, you know, being able to borrow short term. I think we lead in places that make good financial sense. I think when it comes to some of these matters, we tend to kind of watch the first wave and sort of see what happens and adjust ourselves, and I...
Well, that being said, you know, I think if the town somehow decided that this was a permissible use, the planning board has done a marvelous job crafting regulations that would speak to it and address it.
Yep.
You know, I know how hard it is to come up with, you know, regulations that work. You know, I went through this with pornography in the 90s and, you know, we had to tweak it the following year, but, you know, it works, it's very effective. We don't have that as a problem, at least commercially. So, you know, I think either way it goes, we're in good shape.
Okay. Well, if you're ready to vote, and Tom, I would just ask that, I know there's a group on the advisory committee of four or five members, but to just, you know, if we're going to vote favorable action on this article, I would just make sure that the intent of the board is communicated to AdCom. So would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I recommend favorable, favorable action on Article O, general bylaw regarding the ban on marijuana establishments.
Second for the reasons stated.
Okay, and I neglected, is there anyone in the audience who has a comment or question on this?
I'm not really sure what you guys are saying up there.
You're not the only one.
You're voting, but you're not really taking a position, are you?
We're voting to, we're voting to advance this to Town Meeting to let Town Meeting decide.
Okay.
Are you all right, you all right with that? Because you see...
No, I'm good. I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm, I mean, I...
That's what I want to do.
That's fine, and I'm, that's what both of you want to do, so I'm fine with it. Carol, I think what you're also hearing from this board is that, you know, as with, as with every piece of business that goes before Town Meeting, we understand our role is to carry out Town Meeting's wishes. Whatever those are, we will carry those out.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, appointments?
I have one. I would like to move to appoint Philip Schut to the Shade Tree Committee for a term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, Tom, we have some other votes.
So the town will be leasing, is looking to lease a sidewalk plow for the DFW apartment. We have a couple of them that are in bad shape. One is out of service. Another is in need of repair. We have three total. This is a dire need for the town to keep our sidewalks clear, especially around our schools and the neighborhoods around them. So what I'm recommending is that we purchase a new sidewalk plow via a three-year, a three-year lease option that would equate roughly to $350,000 per year. We funded a portion or... We funded a portion, or a good portion of this through outside funds. We have a $40,000 earmark from the 2018, excuse me, 2019 state budget, that we received through the work of Senator O'Connor, and we've received a $40,000, $40,000, an amount of $40,000 through a development agreement, or a portion of a development agreement for the Broadstone Bear Cove project up at the end of, up at the end of Beale Street. So, to that end, then we have, we have, we'll receive some monies through the, returning in one of the, one of the other, the other machine that's not working currently, so we'll get some money back.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
He seems better than buying.
Yeah, I guess.
So it's $150,000, and Randy's budget was going to absorb that. We've asked for, like I say, I've offset, we have funds to offset a good portion of that money. What, the intent is to take the money that I just explained and put that into a, into a reserve balance, in the fund balance, a reserved amount of the fund balance, and use those in the out years, and use any, any monies available this year right away, so that we don't have to rely on future appropriations.
So is this the plow we've been waiting for?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be here next week, provided this is...
Okay.
Well, I was afraid we were going to get it, you know, in May, when we probably didn't need it.
Okay.
So, so it's ready to go, provided we have an affordable time.
I look forward to seeing it on Lower Main Street near Queen Anne Corner.
As soon as it finishes on High Street.
Where there are sidewalks.
I move that we authorize the, what? I move that we authorize the chair to sign the lease with option of purchase agreement with All American Investment Group for a new MT, trackless MT-7 tractor with attachments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's all where you live.
Yeah, it is.
This next item is a housekeeping matter, we, our colleagues on the advisory committee pointed out that the annual acceptance of easement perennial article, which normally is the last article of the warrant, was hiding a little bit on us, but fortunately, we found it, so...
May I call?
I'll make a motion to open the warrant for the 2018 annual town meeting to insert Article AA, acceptance of easements, and to close the warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want to take the next one?
Sure. Move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Ryan Thornton on behalf of Hingham Youth Sockeye for the Face Off Social Fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Saturday, March 3, 2018, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
And I understand the chief has signed off?
Yes, I have.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to David Mahegan on behalf of the Hingham Public Library for the History of Beer lecture, to be held on Thursday, March 8, 2018, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. I'm going to bring my library card and...
Would you like to, my liaison responsibilities?
Liaison responsibilities for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think I covered all the votes. Tom, anything in town administrator report?
Nothing last week.
Okay, Paul?
Just briefly, I found myself watching a lot of zoning hearings, and planning board hearings, and historic commission hearings, and I really want to thank my fellow residents for the great job and service that you're all doing on behalf of the town, especially the chairs, those, those are very challenging exercises, and we're all volunteers, and it's, it's very gratifying to see, see the good work being done by those boards on, on the meetings that are on HCAM. It's my hope that at some point in the future, all these meetings, of all the committees that are on HCAM, but for now, nice job, people.
And I have some happy news for Chief Olson, Robert Olson, but some sad news for the town, and that is tomorrow is Chief Olson's last day as chief of the fire department. I got to know Bob when I started on the advisory committee in 2007-ish, and he had a steady hand with the budget, he was, he was unfailingly patient up until Monday, even through Monday, when I had more and more questions about the fire department budget. He's just an example, I think, of, of true public service to his department and to this town, and, and we're going to miss him very much, but we wish him, we wish him well.
Second, Ed.
I'm going to add on a, sort of a sad note, but I did want to, on behalf of the board and the town, express our condolences to the family and friends of Harry Way. Harry passed away at the end of last week, you may have known him from serving on the Harvard Development Committee, or the Hingham Insurance Committee, or the Personnel Board. I had the pleasure to meet and work with him, I know for many people here in town hall who had that privilege longer than we did, this, this is a big loss to him, and to his family in particular, his wife Lynn, we do offer our sincere condolences and our appreciation for his many significant contributions to the community.
Second, Ed.
With that, our board, we're going to be going into executive session, our next publicly posted meeting will be next Tuesday, March 6, we will have, I think, the easement article to do, and then our, our business on the warrant should be completed, so that is, that is good news. I know for advisory colleagues, the next couple weeks are really crunch times, so I appreciate both of you, and Tom, all your help in us moving through the warrant. The board is going to convene an executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, interim town administrator Thomas Mayo, regarding potential contract and employment as town administrator. The board will not resume an open session. I roll cohort.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.